Good afternoon, everyone. The Essex County Court of County Commissioners Recreation Oversight Committee meeting for Tuesday, August 3rd is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill absent, Commissioner Graham absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Lucy Haddel absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Seville.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares. Absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
I am here. And I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. I'm sitting in this afternoon because the Chair, Commissioner Johnson had a conflict. He may get on at some point. So I want to bring greetings from the Board of Commissioners and from the Chairman, Chairman Johnson. On behalf of the Board, I want to thank the community and their concerns and wanting to have input and be a part of this process for reaching out and conveying those concerns. And I'm sure this is going to be a nice lively discussion. So let's get started. So the topic of discussion is the Weekway Park Dividend Hill Restoration Project. So who from the administration is going to give us an overview and let us know exactly where we are in the process and how the process is moving along and how the concerned citizens and Weekway Park Conservancy and others, friends of Weekway Park can get involved?
Mr. President, Dan Salvante, County Parks Director. I will respond to that on behalf of the administration. Just so everybody understands, we also have Tim Marshall.
Please, hold on, Dan. Please, everyone, if you're not speaking, mute your devices.
We have Tim Marshall from ETM Associates representing the firm and his team. We'll let him talk about that later. To give you an overview, the County of Essex put out an RFP for a consultant for the Dividend Hill Monument at Weekway Park. A scope of work was put together. We received four proposals. Those four proposals were evaluated and ETM Associates was chosen as the successful winner of the bid. Since the award of the contract, Mr. President, we had one kickoff meeting with ETM Associates.
Dan, Dan, just allow me to interrupt so that the folks listening and the residents from the Weekway Park, could you explain the process of once you send out the bid, it comes back, how a vendor is chosen, what that process is? Could you just walk us through that?
Sure, Mr. President. A scope is developed. That scope is then advertised through the local public bidding process. Firms can then submit a proposal back by the date that's advertised. Then those proposals are all reviewed. They're ranked by a committee. So there's a ranking system. And from that point on, we start with the first ranked, second ranked, third and fourth. And that is the process the county follows. So as the ranking went, ETM Associates was ranked the highest out of all four of the proposals that were reviewed.
Thank you for that.
Well, once that ranking was done, we went in front of the Freehold, I'm sorry, the Board of Commissioners, contract was awarded. As of July 15th last month, we had a introduction kickoff meeting to review the scope, the schedule, the primary points of contact, the county project goals, which again go back to the scope of work. We talked about meetings with the stakeholders, input and coordination. Then we proceeded to discuss some of the support the county had us to provide for the consultant so they could start with their survey and their inspection. That's where we left it. So I'm going to turn it over to Tim Marshall now from ETM Associates. He will talk about his team and give us an update where they are right now. Tim?
Thank you, Dan. And thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to come and speak with all of you. As Dan mentioned, ETM Associates is a New Jersey-based landscape architecture firm. We put a team together to work on this particular project. The team includes an architectural historian, Mills Schnoring. We also have a cultural resource consultant, Hunter Research. We have the surveyor. And we have a number of other sort of team members to help support, help support the team. The historical architect and us are the two primes on it and will be doing the majority of the work. In reviewing the scope, we really felt, I mean, this is, it's a complicated project. And we will be focusing on the landscape issues. And Michael, who is on, I believe is on and can speak later, he will be, there he is. He can speak about what their end of the work is going to be. But, you know, we're trying to cover the architectural component to the structure as well as the landscape component, where the landscape sits within. Part of what we'll be doing initially, Dan mentioned, we went out and actually had a meeting on site. We all thought that that was really important, not just to sit in the office, but actually to get out there and see the site and look it over, see what some of the issues were. You know, what are the things we need to do so we can do our work? And so the Parks Department's been really cooperative and they're starting to do some efforts too, so we can get in there and do our work. Our initial work really right now is focusing on doing survey work, doing historical research. We're going to be going up and looking at the county archives as well as going to archives in New York City to get a sense of what is all the information, what is all the background information that we need for the, it's actually at Avery Library at Columbia University where we'll be getting some information. You know, the structure itself is an important structure. It's career in Hastings. I mean, they are, they were a prominent New York City firm. And so we will be doing our due diligence with, you know, investigating all the historical information that's out there. We're also going to be looking, you know, doing a field survey, what kind of, generally, you know, the monument's not in great shape, but you know, what are the things that we really got to be looking at? And, you know, doing, we're going to be photographing the entire thing 360 degrees so we have a record of everything that's there before we start our work. And then we'll be doing the research. So our first part really is kind of getting, you know, getting the lay of the land, if you will. And then after that, we'll be putting in a report to the, of our findings to the county. And based on that findings and that report, then we'll begin doing some of the design work. But it's important that we first understand what it is we're dealing with, what are some of the problems? And then proceed forward. And that includes both the landscape, we'll be looking at, you know, trees or any of the trees there, historically significant or date from a time period when we need to be aware of that. And Michael's end of things, we'll be looking at the structure itself. Michael, do you want to say a few words about your bits of your work?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Tim. Should I, maybe I should start off with a little bit of background on the firm like
Before you do that, please put your name on the record.
Michael James Mills, M-I-L-L-S-F-A-I-A.
And your affiliation, Michael?
Mills and Schnoring Architects, Princeton, New Jersey. We are the architectural consultant to Tim Marshall at ETM. We are expert in the restoration of historic structures. We have done a lot of work in Essex County and in Newark in particular. In the past, we have worked for Essex County. We were the, I was the architect of record for the restoration of the Essex County Courthouse, which was completed in 2006, very large project. A few years later, we did the exterior restoration of Newark City Hall for Mayor Booker in 2010, rededicated it on its 100th anniversary. And just recently, we worked with the James Street Neighborhood Group over at Rutgers, Newark. We just completed a restoration, renovation and addition to a historic building for the Rutgers Alumni Center. It's a historic house for a doctor. There was an adjoining garage that was in bad shape that was demolished and a new addition done to make it a more welcoming, useful facility. And you may know of that project. It was completed just before COVID started. We've done a lot of park structures. We're working on several in Washington DC right now. We have enlisted old structures engineering of New York City. Don Friedman is on this call. And he is acknowledged expert in restoration of park structures. He's done a lot of work with Gostavino tile, which is what this monument is constructed of. And he's terrific and will be a very good partner to Tim and to me and my team, my in-house team to restore the monument, which is a terrific piece of Newark history. Don and I are working right now on the hospital buildings, repairs to the hospital buildings on Ellis Island. So that's a credential we share together. So I just wanted you to know a little bit about us. And we really look forward to working with the county and the neighborhood group on making the most of this park and this structure. And I know Tim has that foremost in his mind as well.
Thank you, Michael. Oh, I'm sorry, were you done? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, 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 I was just thanking you. Let me make sure you're done, you're done first. Because that was really great information in terms of your history and some of the things you've done in and around this community. We appreciate all of your help in restoring these historical buildings and structures. But I'm sorry, though, let me allow you to continue.
No, no, I'm fine.
I interrupt people, so I'm trying to do better.
Well, that's kind of you, but I was, I was, I was pretty much done. Anyway.
I apologize.
No, that's fine. Do you have a question?
We're going to get to that. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Seville or Mercado? Okay, no questions.
No questions here.
Okay. How about from Ms. Moore? I know Mr. Freeman is on. Do you have any questions for the architect?
Well, we'd just like to say first and foremost, Mr. President, thank you so much for responding to our interests to get more information and to share, you know, some of our concerns. Like to thank certainly you, the Commissioners and Madam Clerk, Deborah Davis Ford, for conveying these concerns. We are taxpayers and property owners in Essex County. Many of us who have been a part of this discussion for restoration were raised around Weekway Park. Weekway Park was very much a part of our upbringing. I mentioned, as you're aware of, my mother was the tennis coach at Weekway Park, tennis courts. And so I spent a lot of days in that park growing up. So Dividend Hill was very much a part of our environment. So we thank you for taking the time to assure that this historic site is being secured effectively. As you're aware, Mr. President, it has been sitting in disrepair for some decades, which is very unfortunate because it is one of the most historic sites, not only in Newark, Essex County, but in the state of New Jersey and our country. That site was founded in 1666. What was erected on the site was built just a little over 100 years ago. So it's not just the, the, the structure, it's also the historical significance of that location. And our responsibility to value that history. If we don't know our history, then we fail to grow from that history. And it's important not only for us to value it, but for our children to value it. So we've been disappointed that it is set in the condition that it is set in for the period of time that it has. And so we want to encourage and improve the park commission's earnestness to continue to invest wisely into the quality of life in our park. That's extremely important and that nothing goes neglected that shouldn't be. So I am a taxpayer, as I mentioned, property owner in Newark also. We live in South Orange and, you know, we're frequent the South Mountain Reservation regularly, Verona Park regularly. Dividend Hill would not sit in Verona Park in the condition that it's in in Verona Park or in the South Mountain Reservation. The residents would just not allow it. We can't allow negligence in our local South Essex Park. We just can't allow it. So we're going to have to improve on that. And just as a footnote, I'm a child of urban renewal. And so in terms of community-based development, the community doesn't need to be on the back end of development, it needs to be on the front end of development. So that when it's time to develop, there's input from the community and the community restoration or building is done as a result of what community concerns are. When you're a product of urban renewal, you understand the devastation that building without community input can cause. And so in that, I would like to say that we did write the Parks Commission many months ago, there was an article done by the Star Ledger several years ago to try to bring attention to address this issue responsibly. And we never heard back from the Park Commission. And we want to encourage the Park Commission to respond to citizen concerns. When we write letters, take time, take effort in it, we put hours into discussing this among citizens, residents, and then writing the community, writing our county leader in the Park Commission. And we didn't hear back. And then to hear that this initiative is moving forward without community input is really the cart before the horse. And we want to address that amicably and work collectively. There are questions that we have about the community input engagement, you know, and then of course, local contract opportunities so that when things are contracted, projects are contracted for our county, that those dollars work to stay in the county if possible. So if you have to contract outside of the county, are there opportunity for subcontracts to be cultivated within the community? These, this gets addressed through effective communication. So we want to start with that on our agenda, supporting effective communication, right? If we had talked about this when we sent our letter out in February, we probably wouldn't have to have this conversation right now. But we do appreciate it now because this is important. So, so we thank you. So we want to improve, improve the communication between the County Parks Commission and just the county in general, but specifically on Park Commission and with the residents of the community when community issues are concerned. Dividend Hill in the condition it is in speaks to not only Dividend Hill, but a bigger issue of addressing the quality of the park life in a more effective way. And so that, this is going to require additional conversation, Mr. President, in terms of how we improve services and conditions and management of the park. But it starts with Dividend Hill.
Ms. Moore, if I may interrupt, but if you look at the rest of the park, these things, first of all, it takes planning, right? It takes money, right? So if you look at the rest of the park, new field, you got a new building that's almost complete at 92 Carmichael. This might be one of the last sections to be addressed. And yeah, it is historic, but you can't say that the whole of the park is being neglected. So these issues are being addressed. There is development and stuff that's going on in the park. Yeah, Dividend Hill is a very important piece. And through Doug Freeman and others, they have been engaged in what's going on in the park. This, so you may have sent a letter out in February and, you know, I can't speak to that because it wasn't sent to me or the Commissioners. As far as I know, I never received anything. So wherever you sent it, that's between, you know, we got to get that level of communication up. I agree with you. But in terms of addressing community issues, we used to have pre-COVID, our community meetings. meetings regularly in the park with the county and Doug Freeman and the community. So it's not as though it's not happening. It does happen. It has happened. Now this Dividend Hill thing, they haven't done anything yet except for hired an architect. And he put his group together to address this historic site. And what I know about, because I do a little construction, I actually am the president of a labor union, that when it comes to historic sites, it's a very specialized group who does that. And there's not a lot of people around who have those, that expertise that can address the historical foundation and the work and all of these things. It's a very specialized thing. So I, I don't have local architects who have that expertise or not. I'm not saying we do or we don't. I'm not sure. But they all probably had an opportunity to bid. And a lot of times folks don't bid because they may not have that expertise. This is a very specialized, uh, piece of work here. This is not just general contracting, you're gonna build an edifice. That's not what this is. This is different. So I, you know, I, I'd like to hear from Mr. Freeman because I know he's on here. So he can back up some of the things that I'm saying in terms of community input and where it's been. And what I'll say to you, and this is no disrespect to you, is I don't recall seeing you at any of those meetings that we used to have with the community.
President, Mr. President, can I respond a little bit?
Sure.
I'm the one that received the email in regard to Dividend Hill. I did have some conversations with Doug Freeman verbally, nothing in writing. Then I met with the county executive. We discussed the importance of such a project because of the historic component, and that's why we put an RFP out on the street right away to hire a consultant by bringing on Tim and his firm. So we moved pretty quickly once the email was sent to my attention. That was the first thing. Second thing is, since the DiFenseno administration, the county park system has seen a rebirth, not only in our suburban parks, but also in our urban parks. And Weekway in particularly, we've spent over $35 million on improvements. And you could see what's going on in Weekway Park between athletic fields, between the, the golf course. Recently, we just did some paving down there. We're continually improving it. And of course, you know, the, the building is just beautiful, that's being constructed and will house the community. We look forward to opening that this year shortly in this month of August. So, you know, the county executive always puts his word behind a project and you can see many of the projects that have been completed. The Dividend Hill project has probably been on Wilbur McNeil's schedule when he started in Weekway Park. And again, it's just, you know, there's so many things that we could do at one time, but I think we've done a good effort in trying to restore the park back to its luster. And you can see by the activities and the community that really comes out to enjoy the park on a daily basis, knows those efforts that we put in, working with Doug, working also with Wilbur McNeil. So, you know, I feel confident with this project. Once we, you know, go through the scope of work that has to be done, we'll be able to see a, a big spec and, and see what happens when we put it out on the street.
Evening everyone. Doug Freeman from the Weekway Park Sports Authority Conservancy, also representing Weekway Park Association also as a conservancies. Just for a little background, the partnership that we have put together with the county, I believe it's eight years now, we have been able to use equity along with the restoration of funding from the county and open man, I believe it's trust fund, I believe that's the actual department. There's been a lot of intensive work that has been done with the Dividend Hill as far as research through the WPA. Clear this information as already documented through intensive conversations and meetings that we used to have with the WPA. The building right now, the way it's designed is to have a more inclusive piece. And this is something that the county exec definitely wanted to inspire us to build together with. So in our new building, there's two offices and there's a conference room right together. The, the previous location had a way, it was a little bit separated and it was hard to keep up with what each other's projects were doing. Speaking about the Dividend Hill, we do understand that Dividend Hill has its complications. First is the safety issue with the structure. We do know that there's some complications as far as the, the, the actual structure falling apart and it's been deteriorating for quite some time. We did meet with Dan Salvanti's office, it's Parks and Rec for the record. That was prior to, I believe, the start of our camp season and also was prior to our conversation on what we actually wanted to accomplish on this. We have surpassed our five-year plan. Dan's office along with the Conservancy has agreed on that, that we reached this five-year plan faster than we thought was gonna reach. And that was to actually restore the, the actual park. The, the community has did its part and continue to do our part. We have over 100,000 hours of sweat equity volunteerism time in the park. And that's just with the WPSA. The WPA has way extensive more time to that for over the time of, of the years. It's gonna take some communication between all of us. They're hearing something in regards to going to New York, but I believe that there needs to be a conversation with the WPA and the Weekway Park Sports Authority, you know, in the community because there are historians right here in the city of Newark, in Essex County, that have intense knowledge of this particular structure. Down to, oh, there's a pastor, I believe he passed away. And he's been documenting this for plenty of years along with the preservation of New Jersey. We want to make sure that the local community is involved. We don't want you to feel like you excluded. That's something that our agreement with the county has always been, I can call Dan's office, Dan can call us, and we have a conversation with the community. We use social media, we use the different outlets. Do understand the Patterson Foundation and the Southwater Economic Development stake in this and what they're concerned about. Because one, Weekway Park is the centerpiece of the Southwater. We can agree on that. Even Port Authority has agreed on that. Noah's House has agreed on that, that this is the centerpiece of the neighborhood. Because of the work that has been taking place since the Choice Neighborhood Meeting that was with HUD, and when we met Parks and Rec and the county at this meeting, it was at the golf course, we have actually improved the neighborhood. At the time, that surrounding houses was going around 60,000 to 50,000 dollars. Because of the work that the county has put in, like Dan said, over $32 million, the houses are now worth over 400 and some houses are worth over 500 surrounding the park. What we do understand is that the Elizabeth Avenue area do need to come up to speed. As the commissioner president stated, it's gonna take some money. We do understand that as conservancies, that we can also advocate to raise for these funds so it all don't have to come from the county. So we, we need to be able to do our part as a community too. The building owners, they'll have, some of them are in agreeance that they need to understand that the park restoration improves their property too. So we understand that, you know, doing our conversations that we've been talking to the builders on Elizabeth Avenue and the community, they're starting to understand that the worth of this park is, is the same worth of, or better than Central Park. I, I, I'm a little, you know, arrogant with, when it comes to this park and the county parks. The county has put a lot of work into our parks. That's one thing I want to commend the county exec for, for, you know, restoring neighborhoods because that's what a park does, we restore neighborhoods. But we have to have the, the community involved just as fast as we fix up the park. If the community is not involved, the park kind of goes back to they not included and there's some issues in our parks. This is the reason why it's very important that the community is involved in the restoration of the park. I want to keep the relationship that we do have with the county and the residents. Ivan, I have heard your passion over the years. Ivan is, is, is part of, of one of the reasons why we able to get Airport Village. So it's something that we can do together. And, and that's what I want to make sure that we understand while we sit here in these meetings, that we're not looking to, you know, blame the county or blame the residents or blame anyone in, in that matter. We want to be able to have, you know, cohesiveness and, and togetherness and be able to bring this park together with the, you know, the house events and the different events that we do here where this park can actually come off the general fund and be able to put money on the general fund, you know, like Central Park does. Central Park does over $70 million of, of revenue for, in, for New York. So our park can do that. Why can't it do it? Because of the fact that we have Route 2278, we have airports, International Airport that does over 46 million people a year. All, all these different hotels have come to Weekway Park asking us, can we continue the Choice Neighborhood piece? Which Housing has actually did not agree, where they did not stand by their agreement, which they were supposed to fix Seth Boarding. And, and, and I want to thank the county for continuing the agreement to do their part along with the community to restore Weekway Park. So thus far, for the last 10 years, actually, it has been the county that has been spearheading most of these different projects that's in it. Because if the county did not do anything to Weekway Park, we'd still be in the dilapidation state that we was in back in 10 years ago. Any questions? I can answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, for that passionate overview and sincerity in terms of the work and things that you and your group have been doing over the years. We really appreciate all that you do. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Freeman? Okay, here.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to respond if I may regarding.
Who's speaking?
Back to community. This is Ivan.
Okay.
And it's Ivan.
Put your name on the record. Thank you.
Okay. So just in response to Mr. Freeman's, and, and certainly we greatly appreciate Doug's leadership, the Weekway Sports Authority. And Mr. President, I have sat many, many Saturday mornings at 11 o'clock with Mr. McNeil and, and the Sports Authority to discuss issues around the Weekway Park. So sorry, we, we've missed each other in that regard. But one of the things that we wanted to focus on today was effective communication. And that's where we need to bridge the gap, right? So that, so, so the left hand knows what the right hand is doing and that we convey concerns. So what I understand and what you explained to me and what Doug has explained to me about the conservancy and being able to match resources, I mean, we have stakeholders, residents who want to put resources into supporting the preservation of Dividend Hill. We put that in the initial letter back in February, saying that we want to work together as a community and bring the resources to support the conservancy's ability to be able to be recognized. And so, you know, it is back to communicating effectively so that we can build that base of support that is needed to, you know, see this project successful. You know, this is what happens in other parks, as I understand. And we want to be able to demonstrate that we're willing to put resources to the table as well. We have grant writing ability, we have private donor interest, you know, and we just want to make sure that all of the interest is on the table so that we can go forth in, in a collective way with community and, and not be overlooked in that regard. So that's, that's the general, you know, general appeal that we improve communications. And even with the RFPs that go out, when we express interest and we didn't know that there was an RFP and we didn't know what the process was, I mean, that's just to our ignorance. We want to get more familiar with RFPs and, and learning how they're disseminated. But if we had known about it, you know, we perhaps could have had some input into that process or made some recommendations as well. So we just want to improve communication. I mean, that's, that's what our goal is.
Ms. Moore, if I may, Mr. Salvante? Are you there, sir?
Yes, yes, Mr. President.
Can you explain to everyone here, the RFP, how, how it goes out? How someone can monitor RFPs as they go out, as they're available?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do my best and I'll ask Administrator Jackson might have to jump in on this, but I'll give it to you and hopefully in a, in a good analysis. First of all, the county of Essex has a, a portal for you to register your business and so forth. So when a RFP goes out in regard to your specific area, it would be on the portal. You can download it right off the portal. Every Tuesday, the county advertises all their bids in the Star Ledger as well as the county website. Depending upon the length that it's on the, as we say, on the street, all proposals are then submitted in sealed envelopes. In the bid spec, it would say a certain time, it give you the location, which is the business office at the Hall of Records where the bids are read out loud. And then they are given to the departments to review and to evaluate. Some are based on dollar amount, some are, are based on evaluations, which are outlined in the scope of the, of the RFP.
So let me just, just a quick recap, Mr. Salvante, one, one point. So a particular business or a person who has particular interests. They go on the website, they download the information, they registered to the portal and for the, their particular interest, they will get bids that come to them?
Correct.
They're not gonna get every bid that goes out. They're just gonna get that, what their level of interest is. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Jackson, any?
No, no, thank you, Mr. President. I think Mrs. Salvante sums up nicely.
Excuse me, if I may speak, this is Joanne Turner.
Okay, Ms. Turner.
I just wanted to follow up with some of the comments that have been stated. I am, in one sense, an outsider, but very, very passionate about the, the city of Newark and obviously the county of Essex and the, the Dividend Hill Monument. And so I, I am part of the executive director of a nonprofit called the Caring Network Volunteer Services, and we've done a project in Newark since 2004. Basically, my husband, who's now passed on, was, found that, that monument in the park sort of serendipitously, if you will, and has been really trying to engage a number of people in the community about it. He's the author of a book called Highway of Holiness, and it records the dedication initially of Dividend Hill in 1666 and then the rededication in 2004, where a number of people in the clergy and a number of others who recognized the spiritual and historical significance of the monument came together to, to dedicate, to rededicate what it stood for spiritually and historically. And so I just wanted to piggyback on what others have said about this being the opportunity to be a partnership that is much, much larger than the, than the, the Park Commission. And I, I honor and respect and thank all of you for the parts that you've played and certainly for the commitment to restore this monument. I know that work has been done and Mr. Freeman alluded to some of the work that had been done previously. There've been studies and, and the studies have been wonderful, but there's still trees growing out of the top of this monument. And so I just want to make sure that we are absolutely gonna move forward beyond the study phase. And all honor and blessing to, to Marshall and to the teams that have been gotten together. But I, I'm just wanting to share my passion as well for the continuation of the project beyond the study phase. And also to offer the fact that there are many others that can be tapped into in terms of the grant writing that was mentioned and historical society. And if we could establish a private-public kind of partnership in a way that really can move these, these, these passions forward, there's a lot of dreams that Ms. Yvonne has spoken about, and I know there are others on the call. I, I see Michael and Maria Westbrook here. They're passionate, they've sent their teams out to, you know, pick up the trash around the monument. How many times have I gone myself just to pick up the beer cans and the undescribable items that have been thrown in the area? And I just want to. And I just um want to offer my support in any way I can as a as a public citizen, as a as a leader of a nonprofit that has some connections with historical society. And uh a- as I said, um let you know that there are people beyond uh here that that really do care about this monument. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your leadership.
Mr. President, this is Tim Marshall. Can I can I just clarify to Ms. Turner? Um our scope of work uh includes this investigative phase, but then it also includes a design phase um for the monument as well as preparation of contract, construction documents, and in a bid package. So ultimately, our work is to get this, get the project positioned so that it can be bid out and work actually done.
Okay, can you take the the trees out of the roof?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, that's one of the things. That's one of the things we were talking about on our site visit is uh can we get rid of some of that stuff early on? But yeah, we'll just you know, they're so ingrained now in the structure and and Michael can speak to this more eloquently than I can, but it's actually two domes. There's the outer dome and an inner dome. And of course, one of the things that's happening is that those tree roots are getting into um you know, that that void, if you will, between the the two domes. And and the last thing I want to say is that when it comes to public-private partnerships, I, for fifteen years, I worked in Central Park for the Central Park Conservancy. And when I started there, it was, we had five employees and it was this little kind of almost like a mom and pop operation. And now, of course, it has a contract to to run the park. So you know, I personally am really committed to opportunities of creating public-private partnerships and the role that, and it's always in my mind, is, you know, how these things actually can work. And they don't all work exactly the same way. And, you know, Dividend Hill may present opportunities and ultimately it's the it's the um, you know, the county parks um decision and stuff about how these things work. But I mean, we we do work all over the country with nonprofits and public-private partnerships. So rest assured that that is something that is for first and foremost on our minds and keen as we begin kind of looking at this and what opportunities um may or may not uh exist. So yeah, it that's that's always something we're looking at.
Wonderful. Well, that's that's really wonderful, Mr. President. Um I just want to say thank you to um to Tim for that that feedback and and Joanne Turner as well, because that's what's needed. We're better when we work together. And and we and so we would like to demonstrate what we can accomplish through working together. And that was our whole appeal of writing initially, was to appeal so that we can work together and and uh create uh this next phase or next uh stage of Dividend Hill's life uh in the community, uh maybe in a new and more vibrant way because we have worked together to assure its historical significance and how we can serve the community now. I've heard members of Weekway Park, Doug Freeman particularly, talk about uh ways in which the community can engage around Dividend Hill, you know, the waterfalls and having, you know, a cafe at the base of the hill. I mean, people like to gather in that area and creating opportunities for them to come together. So we want to be able to share the the interest, the need, the desires of the community with within the design process so that the interest is captured, right? And that the community engages more readily because it's had a had input in the process, right? So I I thank you for seeing the importance of working together. Um and we just really want to encourage that. So in your community engagement input process, if we can do that early on and uh and and capture the vision, the passion and commitment of community on the front end, that can be included in the report and hopefully carried out eventually.
How about early on and continually? So who who's speaking?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just. I'm just.
To have a clear record. That's fine.
And I'm I'm agreeing with both uh Tim and Yvonne, and uh it's well well said, both of you. No, I abso- absolutely. Public-private partnerships uh make sense. Uh far too long, one of the things that happens, uh I'm not saying in this particular case, but I've seen development go on in certain communities with no community input. And uh yeah, it's not a good look. So anything we can do to mitigate that here makes sense. Uh at least, you know, understanding what the uh community concerns are, what they'd like to see incorporated and included in uh at Dividend Hill. I don't know how much you can do there. Uh but at least have the uh conversation, the opportunity to uh have some input makes um sense to me. So.
Great. So, Mr. President, how can we move forward to assure that next conversation around the community uh and county interest?
So I would, I I would um uh ask uh the BA, Mr. Jackson and uh his team, Mr. Salvante. Um what are the next steps in terms of this particular project? I mean, it's still very early on. Uh and so I guess it's better, you know, we could have some community meetings, I guess.
Um I I I think that's correct, Mr. President. Um um and I would leave it up to our consultants and Mr. Salvante and his team to sort of orchestrate those. Um and understanding the need for uh early input as much as possible. But I think we're really um at the data gathering stage at this point. There's a lot of data, just basic data that has to be gathered first. And then I think those conversations could be uh more productive at that that level. This is my my take on it. But I'm open to um being disagreed with by our experts. But that's that's my, that's my assessment.
That sounds about right. And on our end, from the commissioners, uh we would like uh any information to flow through uh Deborah Davis Ford and her office, the clerk, so that, you know, if it if it comes to her, she can disseminate the information to proper uh parties.
Great.
Mr. President, I just want to also.
Mr. Pres.
Mrs. Salvante, one second, Ms. Moore.
Yeah, right on the uh on the scope of work, uh is also identifies an area of meetings and coordinations uh that the uh consultant has to meet no less than five meetings. So it's a, it's built into the scope that we have to have the meetings with the public. That was one of the things we wanted to make sure was in the spec when the spec went out on the street. And being at our new building, hopefully be open shortly, it'll be a great place when we're ready. If we can, uh with COVID, have that meeting.
Great idea. It's great idea.
Okay.
That's a perfect location. You think I could get a key? No, just kidding.
Uh, Mr. President, Mr. President, can we forward our information to uh Madam Clerk? Um so that she has our contact information to forward it to uh ETM for future engagement?
I I think that makes sense.
Okay, great. And I'd just like to say, uh in closing, there's one other concern, and that was regarding the uh Green Acres Grant. Is this subject to a a grant being approved, this work that ETM has been contracted for? Is it, and are we having to be competitive in that grant process?
Uh currently, right now, there is no grant for this project. Again, this is a scope for construction and inspecting services. Uh we don't even know what the cost will be for this project. So that's the second part of this uh project. But no, at this time, we've not submitted anything to Green Acres.
Okay, great. Mrs. Salvante, I also just wanted to mention, just because I want you to understand our passion. Uh my mother worked for the Park Commission, so I was a Park Commission baby growing up and under Bill Shipley and Joe Clark. So you could understand uh my nature of being expeditious because that's what Joe Clark committed to and uh instilled in us as kids growing up at at in the Essex County Park system. If you remember the urban Decamp Park, which they were over had oversight on. So um this passion that you see today, this commitment was cultivated in Weekway Park. Okay? So just so you understand the background and understand where the passion comes from. So, yeah.
Mr. President?
That's not. I'll I'll never mind.
Ma- Madam Clerk?
I just want a point of clarity. Um so um we don't have a a Parks Commission in regards to uh the Director Stan Salvante. He's the, he's the Director of Department of Parks and Recreation. It's not a commission. So we're the the Board of County Commissioners. Uh there may be a Parks, Essex County Park Commission, but um Dan Salvante is um Director of Parks and Recreation, which is a department in the county. So I just wanted to have that clar- clarity for the record, Mr. President. So when you're having that conversation, if you're referring to Dan Salvante and his um area of responsibility, it's not a commission, it's a department.
Right.
Mr. President, he a commissioner, I'll take that too.
You you can't have it all.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I say something?
Yeah, Commissioner Sebo, absolutely.
Yes, uh I'm glad that Deborah Davis Ford made the correction about calling it a Park Commission. We, excuse me, we haven't had a Park Commission in so many years. That's from a long time ago. And we have a department with Dan Salvante, head of the Department of Recreation and uh um and the all the historical monuments uh division and so on. And the other thing I wanted to bring up uh goes back to when Doug Freeman was speaking. Doug Freeman has been coming to the Board of Free Elder Meetings. We're now called Commissioners. But he's been coming to the Board of Free Elder Meetings, going back many, many years and always coming before us about what is happening at Weekway Park. And I was pleased to hear him speak today, and he seems very happy with what is happening to the park. Ever since the county executive, Jody Vincenzo, became the county executive, he had originally been the uh Free Elder President. Work is being done on the parks. And I'm a member of the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board, and everything that the county uh um executive wants to do comes before us and we discuss it. We make changes. We make additions and we vote on whether to approve it. And we approved Dividend Hill for the Engineering, Design and Construction Inspection Services. So we're at the first stage and it will move on and we will see a total rehabilitation of Dividend Park. And I know it well because I grew up in Hillside and I grew up in Hillside right near the Weekway Park, right over the Newark line to Hillside. And I used to play in the park growing up as a kid. So I know all the sites that we talk about. And I am pleased, very pleased, that Dividend Hill is being taken care of at this point. And anything Doug Freeman has to say about where we should go in Weekway Park, we all listen and we hope that we get there. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Commissioner McConnell.
Yes, uh first, let me say thank you, Mr. President, for having this um Recreation Oversight Committee and chairing it um for all of us. Uh I wanna, I'm very encouraged um with the conversations having here today. I want to thank all of the participants, all the uh the administration and Dan and his team has done a phenomenal job in the park system. And I can show you, I can attest that um when the when the county executives uh puts his word behind any project, you can rest assured that it is going to be done um uh thoroughly in its entirety. And um and it's going to take time, it's going to take money, but I can assure you that when it's done, um it's going to be done right. And um to all of the speakers here today that are participating in the partnership uh public-private partnership is uh very important uh to the county and we encourage that. And I am uh I want to thank all of you for being on this call. And we're going to continue the conversation and we're going to continue the partnership uh moving forward. So again, everyone, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your leadership on this. Thank you, Commissioner McConnell. I I do want to take a this opportunity to uh thank each and every one of you for taking time out of your day for this most important issue uh coming before and asking uh for some clarity and some input to find out where we are. And I was really, really pleased to hear from uh Director Salvante that there were five community meetings already built into the RFP, which I didn't know. I was unaware of that. So some of the things that we're talking about uh having and and doing is already built into the language. So that that's outstanding. Uh I'd like to see more of that with other projects. Uh but again, you know, I I've been on this board going on my seventh year. I'm in my uh third term. And from day one, I've been a staunch advocate for uh Weekway Park. Uh I live up the street from Weekway Park. I I'm on the track in Weekway Park. You know, I do a lot of things in the park. You know, I'm a frequent visitor. Uh so when it be a trash, be it the roads, be it the track going around the uh the lake, whatever it is, you know, they'll tell you, they get many pitches and emails and phone calls from me, even with the fence, you know, just replacing parts of the fence. It's very expensive and we have to find the money. So you know, money is very important. So when you talk about private uh uh partners and uh public partners working collectively, uh we can certainly get there. And uh I'm a staunch advocate for that. It just makes sense, you know. You got your hand raised, Mr. Freeman? You you raising your hand now?
I do. I I just want to thank the commissioners. Uh so I also used to say freeholder, but commissioner uh well, uh one of the things uh I still hold dear to me is a conversation that we had years ago when I used to come to the Freeholder Meeting and with Wadu and we just kept coming and coming and coming. It was uh pre- former President Blonie Watson said, you have to come with solutions. And I'm glad that we are at the solution state because that continues to be the model that we have agreed upon through our partnership is to come with solutions, not just complaints. Uh every complaint that we have, I just want the uh the residents to know and those who are not from the Essex County that we just don't have complaints. We come up with solutions and then we do all sweat equity. Uh the public-private partnerships that is a a model of the conservancies. When you look at the actual contract agreements, uh the conserv- conservancies can rate up to five hundred thousand dollars each year. Uh that's something that the county had put in themselves. Uh that's not something that was advocated for. This is the part of the advocacy that was put in prior for years before I even got started with the park. Uh one of the pieces that we do understand on the community level is that the county could build it, but we have to help take care of it. So whatever we discuss this this discussing at this moment is another um portion of it. When we talk about funding, we talk about where the money is coming from, where the help is coming from to help uh be the eyes and ears of this facility that once the county builds it and takes it and makes it beautiful, we want it to stay beautiful. And that's the part that we at now, with why I discussed that we at now have surpassed the five-year plan that we have previously. And we had the the five-year, meaning create a five-year plan of keeping the upkeep and oversight of the park. It's hard for the the Parks uh Department to keep up with all of this parks, especially with the magnitude uh and the popularity of Weekway Park. And you look at the golf course, I um also, I forgot to mention First T. Uh First T played a major part in the restoration of this park too. So it's not just the WPA and the WPSA, it's also First T. Um and in our partnerships and 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 advocacy and then also uh being able to just take care of what we looking for with with our uh park. You know, this is our urban suburban environment. Look at the house music events that brings over ten thousand people every year, and there's not one incident, you know. And these are the things that we want to continue to go. You know, you have circuses coming here. You have all kind of different um um avenues. And why? Because the county um went and came along with the community and listened to our outcry, listened to our passion and said, okay, uh like I said, uh what Jody said, he said, we're gonna make this into a sports nature park. There are pieces that need to be done. Yeah, there's there's restoration of the tracks. There's things that need to be done. We we do understand it. The thing, um Dan Salvante and I talked about the lake. Uh he at one time, he said he wanted to put back the uh the little boats that was in the lake. But there's is concerns that you can't just put people back in a in a lake that may be or may not be uh with issues. We have to find out. So the EPA did come through. Uh it's on the record when the pass that the EPA did take a a sample of the lake. Um there was conversation years and and actual architects that took um diagrams and they did things with. Um, there was conversation years and and actual architects that took um diagrams, and they did things with Wilbur Bigmill about the Dividend Hill. Um, I believe there was some work prior by the county to to fix the columns, because Wilbur Bigmill used to speak about this every Saturday, and he made a point to talk about the columns, uh and how the columns need to be done. And and it's my understanding, when you start dealing with the historical structures, there's some uh uh materials that are not made anymore. So you have to find these different uh uh materials that's going to accommodate and satisfy the historical society and and preservation. So, you know, we we do understand where we at, uh we but we also need to start focusing on park maintenance and management. Um, it's gonna be a a need for the upkeep because of the popularity and how many people that we have coming to the park. The same way it is being built, it's the same way we want it to be sustained, we want it to be utilized for years to come. Uh, we don't ha- wanna have to keep going into the general budget, trying to fix up Weekway Park. Weekway Park can take care of itself. We just need to now figure out how we all collectively do it together with county, with uh corporations, with residents, with everyone. That was always been the model, that's what we shared, and that's what we do here in Weekway Park and Essex County. And we happy to be part of Essex County as a resident, and be able to have our voice heard. Uh, Yvonne, I feel your passion, I feel your passion with uh Zorna, uh everyone. I just wanna continue our meetings. Uh, what I do wanna uh put on the record right now is the state of New Jersey uh offered us a a grant for ventilation equipment. Uh, we're gonna be able to uh in our building, add additional ventilations for the meetings so that we have in the park. Alright, so just just wanna put that on the record, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Uh, you you, that's a conversation you're gonna need to have with with the administration, Dan Salvante, and probably engineering. You're talking about uh more ventilation, like you're tapping into a system, but that that's a further conversation. I just wanna um acknowledge uh Commissioner uh Cooper. I see you. Alright. So if there is nothing else and no other business, I wanna again thank each and every one of you for taking uh this time out of your busy schedules uh and uh coming on this meeting. And I wanna say uh, let's get to work soon.
Right. Uh, Mr. President, I just wanna say thank you again, and just wanted to mention very quickly uh that this Friday at Weekway Park at the entrance of Lines and Elizabeth Avenue, we will host Neighbors for Arts Education. Um, and that event will be a jazz event. Um, Nate Adely, who was the music director for Luther Vandross, and Newark's own um Dwight West will be performing at five o'clock, right at the base of Dividend Hill in the, it's called Jazz on the Green. And so we extend um this notice, uh, Mr. President, we'd love for you to come and bring greeting and welcome uh for that event. Uh, again, it is five, it starts at five o'clock, it'll go to like seven thirty, eight o'clock. And uh we wanna demonstrate our love for the park and our commitment for how culture can build communities, how art can build communities. And uh so we we thank you for this time. We are committed. Uh, this event is being sponsored by Neighbors for Arts Education through our foundation and through support of of other entities like um Volunteer Network. Um, so uh we just want, we're demonstrating that that we're here and are willing to commit and bring resources to the table to help address quality of life and support for our community. So thank you so very much again for your leadership and for your guidance and direction, patience and time.
My pleasure. If 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 that is all, I'm gonna say farewell and um Godspeed to each and every one of you. Have a great day.
Thank you, President, for running such a great meeting.
Thank you.
Yes. Good afternoon.
Take care.
Take care. God bless. Stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.